Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time I'll call into open session this work session meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees at 7:12 PM on April 17th, 2014. The Board intends to make one of its scheduled meetings each month a work session. This meeting tonight is a work session. In our common practice, we, it's in, is our common practice not to include an open forum on work session agendas. No action or vote will be taken on any discussion topics. If any action or vote is taken on these topics, they will appear in future agendas as action or discussion topics, and the agendas will include open forums so the public may address the Board. You can also always email us or call us at any given time on AISD.net where all of our contact information is on there. I want to thank everyone for coming out. We will start our meeting this evening with the opening cer- ceremony. Please join Mr. Pampa and the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) Thank you. Please be seated. Now if you would, please join me in a moment of silence.
Thank you. around you. With that, we will move to our first agenda item, which I just misplaced my, there it is. It's hiding behind my other sheet. We'll move to our first discussion item, which is action item, discussion item A, 2014-15 Financial Futures Committee Report to the Board of Trustees. Dr. Raish.
Thank you, President Hogg. The Community Engagement Committee, which is myself, Mr. Hibbs, and Mr. Pampa respectfully request that we actually move this item so that we, as a committee, can discuss the FFC recommendations, meet with staff and the FFC Chair to go over them, make sure they're aligned with our strategic plan, and that type of thing, and bring it back during our probable work session in May.
That, that is perfect unless there's any objections from any other Board members. Perfect. We'll move on to discussion item B, 2014-2015 Student Code of Conduct. I see some familiar faces in the audience, Dr. Cavassos. Please, please move forward.
Thank you, President Hogg. And at this time, Mr. Hill will make a presentation of the revisions to the Code of Conduct. We have had a Student Code of Conduct Committee that has been meeting, and Michael will introduce the committee here in just a minute. So, Mr. Hill?
Okay. Good evening, President Hogg, Dr. Cavassos, and some other members of the Board. I would, first of all, like to take this opportunity to recognize the, the committee of teachers, parent professionals, professionals, and students that work together to go over this Student Code of Conduct. They've spent many hours, meeting two to three hours per session, and so I would like to take this time to recognize Ms. Mulju and the committee for that. So, appreciate the work that they've done. And so, as we mentioned, every spring we go through this process, and I'd like to start off by saying that there's not a lot, not a lot of recommended changes, just a little cleanup here and there within the Student Code of Conduct. As you all know, we are moving forward with PBIS, and so we want to start off by saying that we know that there is some alignment that needs to take place with the Student Code of Conduct with regard to PBIS, but we don't want to put the Code of Conduct out in front of PBIS. We want to get PBIS out first, and then next year we'll come back with some alignment with, with that. So, I would like to start off by saying that. And then we'll get right into some of the recommended or changes or items for discussion. Page 18, under the Frequently Asked Questions, it's just cleaning up that area, asking, instead of just talking about student IDs, turning it into a real FAQ and saying, what is the policy on the student ID, which is referenced in the Student Code of Conduct in page 53. Next, it's just more information about providing resources to parents, and it says, does AISD have a resource information page for parents? Yes. And then on the electronic version, it would, that link would be there, and those are some of examples of things that would be highlighted in that, in those information page or those resources for parents. General information, district information, and some other business information. Students with disabilities, again, more FAQs or more information for parents with, who are parents of students with disabilities. That link would take them to a plethora of, of information. We're looking at moving a group two misbehavior on page 26. Something talks about improper possession, and we want to take out use, abuse, or distribution, and then we'll add that to the next, a group three misbehavior. But possession of, of an over-the-counter drug would be a different group than, than use, abuse, or distribution, which on the next slide is highlighted here. So intentional misuse, abuse, or distribution of over-the-counter drugs or supplements would be moved to a group three misbehavior. Also, a group three misbehavior, we're taking out the electronic cigarette, but I want to make note that we're going to give that its own bullet on, on the next one. So we're just pulling it out of here with smokeless and then putting it in an area so that it'll be, it'll get the attention that it needs. Group four misbehaviors, tampering with or setting off fire alarms and/or extinguishers, we're taking off that part about may result in a citation after working with the police department and the, some changes in the, from the last legislative session, there may be difference in the fines in that, and so we don't want to put that in, in the handbook at this time. And then on page 40, dealing with expulsions, just the definition of the switchblade knife that came out of the penal code, I'm sorry, of that, of those definitions, and so that's just a change in that, and then again, that will be referenced in the back on, on the definitions page. In the transportation code, we're looking at moving some stuff around, but after more discussion, we just want to recommend deleting this entire part from the Student Code of Conduct with regard to what items are may or may not be visible on, on the school buses. And then on, again, with that transportation, we're adding that language dealing with electronic cigarettes, vaporizers, vape pens, and similar vaporizing, vaporizer devices. Again, putting that, that emphasis on that because that seems to be the latest, the latest trend of fad, if you will. And then on the Student Dress Code, we have in there currently see-through material are considered unacceptable, but after talking with campus administration, we want to add, add a piece of language that says that unless you have a, an item underneath that, that's in dress code. And so the see-through things are appropriate as long as what's underneath it is in dress code. A lot of conversation with the campuses regarding the, the picking up of the cellphone, and some parents were, were kind of concerned that kids need that as a, what they would call a lifeline, potentially safety on their way home, or once they get home. That's the parents' way of giving, getting that communication with the children, and so prior policy had it that the parent would have to come and pick up the cellphone, where we're asking that, we consider letting the parent give permission to the campus administration for us to turn it back over to the student, but still having to have that parent contact if that device is, is, is taken up at school. And then some clearing up after working with the Special Ed Department and the RTI, just clearing that language up there about tier one and tier two instruction. They want to take that out at this time because it's kind of redundant and it's, it's, it's not necessary at this time. Then changing that Department of Special Populations to the RTI Depop, Department, and that's just cleaning up a little language there. And again, some more definitions in the back of the book. This came straight from, from law, and so a club is being identified or defined a little bit differently than it was initially, and including that nightstick. And then again, that's, that's straight out of the penal code, as defined by the penal code. So we're making alignment there. And then the same thing with the knife versus the, the illegal knife. That's a definition that was changed in the penal code, and so we just take that straight from the penal code and add it to our Student Code of Conduct for alignment. Again, it was very, not, not, not many changes, just a lot of cleanup or, and just a few tweaks here and there, and so we'll entertain any questions that you have at this time.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, President Hogg. Thank you, Mr. Hill, and thank you to the committee. Appreciate it. On the, the bus, transportation, where we have the minor discipline for food and drinks and the electronic devices.
Yes.
I don't know if it was the intent of the Board to take the food and drinks part out. I mean, I, I don't see that we want the students to be able to use their food and drinks on the bus.
Okay.
But it looked like you said that we're going to take out that whole paragraph?
And if I said that, let me, let me stand corrected. We want to take out the part about the electronic devices.
Right.
We just want to remove that part.
We still don't want to be eating and drinking on the bus.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you for that. For clarification.
Mr. Barron, just clarification. They can have food and drink on the bus. It just can't be.
Visible.
Visible.
Correct.
Lunches, food they may be taking home, anything like that.
Right. That's correct.
How about a water bottle?
Good, good question.
Same thing. It's, it's a drink, so you can have it, but just.
Have it away. Okay.
Yes.
On the returning the phones, can we relatively ensure that that will happen the same day as the phone is taken?
We can't ensure that would happen. It, it's a possibility, but what we, what we run into is a concern of the parent that, of course, you understand that part, but it's possibly that it could happen the same day, and administrative schools would make every effort to, but it's not a guarantee that it could happen that same day.
Okay. I think it's going to be kind of tough to get it to happen the same day. That's why I just brought it up. Okay. Thank you. That's all I got.
Dr. Raish.
Thank you. Mr. Hill, on that parent giving permission on the cellphone to be able to retrieve it, is that written notification? Is that the parent's calling on the phone? Is that something that the district or the campus is going to call the parent at the request of the student? What are the specifics there?
And to, to say that it would be written, I think that would, that would potentially limit us.
I agree.
But we would definitely look at if there's an opportunity there for the campus administration to make, make contact with the parents, just to get that verbal.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good. Thanks.
Ms. Peña.
How do you identify that it's really the parent calling?
Well, we have.
No, the only reason I'm asking this is, I was thinking back when I was in high school. Actually, I graduated from high school, but my brother, my, he lived with me, and he's only two years younger than I am. And I had a feeling he was ditching school, so I called the school and asked how many days he had not shown up. And they said my voice sounded very young, and I was at my office at that time because I was already working. And I said, well, he lives with me. My father has asked that I take care of him. So he lives with me, and I have a feeling he's not attending classes, so I'm trying to determine that. If you're questioning my, being an adult, would you like to speak to my boss? And then they gave me the information, and yes, he had been ditching school. I was right. But anyway, that's why I was wondering. They, you know, they questioned me, but yet they could have withheld that information. I could have had to call my father and ask him to call. I didn't want to get my brother into that kind of trouble, but I did want to get him in trouble. So how, how do we do that? I mean, how are you going to prove it? It's the parent, it's not another child, it's, you know?
That's, I don't think that you could avoid that. If the kids are being deceitful, then that, that's a possibility that we just have to deal with. But, you know, we have administrators that, that deal with parents on, on other occasions, and we just, you know, we try to do things to identify that it is the actual parent, whether we call their cellphone number that's in our system or.
That would be a good way.
Their work number or whatever it is. And many times the parents will say, well, just keep it.
Yeah. Because the other thing is this, and I don't know if they still have this since my daughter was in high school a few years ago, there, there was a system that was in place where if I wanted to see what my daughter was doing academically, I mean, it told me everything, what her vaccinations were. It said when she went to the nurse's office and why she went to the nurse's office. It was all on the website that I could log into as a parent. Could we put there on that sheet if a parent wanted to go check to see what was going on, that the phone had been confiscated?
That's, that's a possibility.
That's a lot of work.
I'm guessing it is a possibility because we do have the, the ability with teams to do certain things with regard to parent notifications. So, to answer your question, I think it's a possibility.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious how you, how that would be handled because it's, you know, anybody could call.
Right.
Thank you, Ms. Peña. Ms. Peña, I think, I would say no matter what we put in place, they're going to find a way around something we're doing, and I, I think this is one of those instances where we have trust in our administrators and our principals and assistant principals and let them, because I think you bring up a fair point, but I think it's also, we've talked about in the years past of how we want this Code of Conduct, but also to enable our principals to be able to be the leaders. And Mr. Hill, as a former principal, knows how a kid's going to get around, and they, they know when they're trying to run one over, but even the best principals, things get by them every now and then. Kids are smart. Kids are real smart to get around, so. Perfect. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Hill and the committee, thank you so much for all your hard work. It was, we spent many hours in years passed on it, and I think we've got a lot of it really working well, so I thank you for these corrections tonight.
Thank you.
Up next, we'll move on to discussion item C, data warehousing. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg. And as part of our strategic plan, there's a, a part of that that includes the combining of data and making sure that it is providing information to make data-driven decisions. So as part of that effort, Chad and his group and Dr. Carter have been working on data warehouse possibilities. And so tonight Chad will provide information on that.
Lots of insight. President Hogg, members of the Board, Dr. Cavassos, thank you for your time this evening. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce two folks that are here with us tonight from eScholar. We have Wolf Bohm and Elaine Rula with us, and they'll be a part of the, the presentation as well as Dr. Carter here as we kind of go through the process. So thank them for their time, for being here. Okay, just jump right in here. I really wanted to kind of start it with a lens in mind because the district has spent a lot of time developing a strategic plan. One of those items out of the strategic plan is specifically focused on the local accountability system. If you remember correctly, we have a total of eight steps to that. It's Initiative or Action Plan 1.5, which is Implement a Local Developed Accountability System. We're fortunate enough to have completed five of those steps. We're now on step six, where the committee recommends the data warehouse and data dashboards to the Board. So that's where we are this evening. As we look at where we're at, and we look at potential data warehouse and dashboards for our school district, you, you try to think about what are those outcomes? What do we want to accomplish by doing this? And we've kind of bulleted and highlighted some of those just real quick. But when I reflect and think of a warehouse myself, it really provides us the ability to make strategic decisions based upon data analysis and trending over time. Our outcomes obviously, as bulleted here, are to develop a central repository where we connect all of our disparate systems such as Teams, Polaris, ERO, those key systems into one centralized repository that we can perform data analysis on and trending over time. One of the key things that I think is important to note is real-time awareness, not just for district level, but down to our teachers and our campus administrator folks. Forecast trending over time, program evaluation is a big piece of this puzzle, and certainly alignment with state and federal standards, tools for teachers, and access to data for our parents. So as a part of this whole process, by the time it's all said and done, those are the things we hope to achieve. I want to go through real quick kind of our process. It has been a very lengthy process. We started back in the fall identifying potential products and ideas by meeting with various vendors to get ideas as a district and also visiting with individual departments across the district, just trying to generate things we need to be thinking about as we look at a potential solution for our district. Out of those meetings, we developed an RFP, as you see here, 14-55, that was issued. We had a total of eight vendors that responded as a part of that process. Through our preliminary evaluations, we narrowed that list down to five, and then ultimately established a committee, developed our rubrics, and continued on with our analysis. Kind of the next phase after we got upon that, we asked for those five vendors to come in and do a full detailed review of their product, and give us the opportunity to ask and answer questions, see what those products had to offer. Anywhere from canned solutions to custom solutions were mixed in to those vendors. Out of those five, we selected two finalists, and those two finalists were required to do a proof of concept task. And we thought that was important because as a district, we really wanted to see how difficult it was to take ownership over the product over time. If we wanted to be able to customize things ourself, give us a sense of, do we have the ability to do that? How easy is it to do that? Those kinds of things. And give us the, an idea of how those vendors would approach creating dashboards on behalf of the district. We thought that was important. What's their lens? Is it in line with us? And then, of course, we did, after the proof of concept task, we did a final review with a cross-section of our campus principals and some district staffs to get their input. We felt that that was a very important part of the process. Reference verification, of course, price negotiation, and that kind of brings us here tonight. So real quick, I wanted to give you all a sense of, through all of our conversations and meeting with our vendors, kind of a brief overview of, of a phased approach that we're considering through this process. You'll notice that where we're at today would be phase one. Again, tonight is informational. This potentially would progress to the May 1st Board Agenda as a part of that process. But our thoughts on phase one really revolves around district dashboards for administrators as well as campus principals. And kind of tearing down through that, phase two would involve expanding our campus administrator level for dashboards, and then going down to teachers would be a part of phase three. And once we're confident in where we're at with our teacher dashboards, we would expand that potentially out to parents. Again, this is totally customizable, however we want to do that, you know, and there might be certain wins along the way. So as we're designing and developing based upon small focus groups, what those dashboards need to look like, we might be able to accomplish some of these things kind of in tandem or in line with, with some of those phases as we go through. So the concept now would be to begin, obviously, in May with our first phase, hope to have district level as well as potentially campus principal dashboards for the start of next school year, and then continuing down that trend on that tentative schedule. Okay, I would actually like to pass it over to eScholar and give them the opportunity to kind of share with you a little bit about the product, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. President Hogg, members of the Board, Dr. Cavassos, thank you for the opportunity to present to you. My name is Wolf Bohm. I'm the president of eScholar. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about who eScholar is, what we do, about our Texas presence, and about our proposed data warehouse solution. eScholar's only business since 1997 is data warehousing, data analysis, and data reporting for education. We have a national presence, but I'd like to talk specifically about our Texas presence, and that's Northside ISD and the Texas Education Agency. Excuse me. At Northside ISD has been a customer of ours for over four years. It's populated a very broad data warehouse and a very deep data warehouse. When I say deep, year-on-year data warehouse. I selected a few of the hundred reports that they've published to highlight for you the kinds of things that you could do with a data warehouse. So for example, as you'll see on the slide, attendance analysis. In their case, I just selected one as the average daily attendance. Discipline, top five discipline incident types, month-on-month, year-on-year. Course data analysis, completion, and so forth. Enrollment, withdrawals, transfers, new to the district. And staff, and I chose just two of them off of the list of some of the Northside's reports, in this case absences year-to-date, absences year-on-year. Now I'd like to talk to you a little bit about our relationship with the Texas Education Agency. We're the vendor behind the new Texas Student Data System Education Data Warehouse. This data warehouse is going to be the new source or the new PEEMS, the source for PEEMS. And as part of that, the Texas Education Agency will be able to eliminate over 160 different data collections that each of the districts in Texas is subject to. In this slide and the following slide, I want to talk to you about the breadth of what a data warehouse is capable of handling. It's truly intended to be an enterprise data warehouse for the district. I draw your attention on the left-hand side to student demographic data assessments, and that includes SATs, PSAT, STAR, as well as classroom assessments. Virtually every assessment you can imagine can be stored, captured in that data warehouse for analysis and reporting, and of course, all sorts of attendance data. On the right-hand side, I draw your attention to the staff data that we can capture, and specifically picking one out, staff evaluation. By the way, if you see the word new on some of these, our product is something that evolves. The district's needs for data evaluation and analysis changes over time, and this product is intended to grow with the district's needs. If you look back five years, the data analysis in education was very different. The kinds of things that districts and administrators focused on were smaller than they are today, and this product is intended to grow with the district's needs. On the next slide, I'll draw your attention to a couple of areas that the administrators in the district said are very important to them, including program evaluation on the left-hand side, and of course, special education. On the right-hand side, and I'm just picking a few in particular here, would be facilities data and survey data. The education data warehouse is intended to not simply capture data, but during that capture process, to make sure that it's high-quality data. Just bringing the data into the warehouse isn't sufficient. Dirty data, incomplete data, isn't going to get you the answers or the analysis that you need. And our product is intended to capture as much as possible, sometimes highly complex business rules, and to provide that information to the departments inside the district for their analysis and their ability to fix that data. In our, early on in our proposal, we actually gave a demonstration of, we took a PEEMS business rule, and we actually applied it to some of the district data, or I'm sorry, sample data, not, not to the district's own data. But we demonstrated how a department could get access to dirty data very early in the process. Traditionally, it would have been potentially six weeks after the data had been submitted to TEA that TA might call the district and say, you've got some dirty data, you've got to fix it. Well, six weeks later is hard on the department, hard on the district overall, it gets in the way of a normal data flow. And this data warehouse is intended to address that issue as well as to capture the data. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the Texas Student Data System and what it is for, what it can do for Arlington and also what it can't do to support Arlington. As we talked about a moment ago, it will become the single data collection platform for TEA, and it will replace the second, those separate data collections that I talked about. It will also offer, thanks to the Dell Foundation, some, some dashboards that are primarily focused for, on teachers. And I see those as ideally suited for teachers who have a student coming in from out of district that need to get access to information on that student's performance in the student's prior district, so that the teacher can immediately work with that student prior to say, so before some of that data might come in another way. But what the Texas Student Data System won't do for Arlington is to support the district's scorecard, is to support the on-track-to-graduate indicators. It won't provide the ability to provide custom reporting, or sometimes known as ad hoc reporting, and it won't provide the ability to load the, the types of data, capture the kinds of data, and analyze the kinds of data that the district has expressed interest in, including financial data, program evaluation, and staff evaluation data. What I'd like to do now is ask my colleague Elaine Rula to demonstrate for you some of the visualizations of data that we're proposing. Before I have Elaine do that, I'd like to just talk a little bit about her and her presence here. Elaine is a Dallas-area-based employee of eScholar. She and colleagues of hers who are also employees of our company will be actively involved in this data warehouse implementation. Elaine is a former schoolteacher here in Texas, she's a former district administrator, and she was at Region 10. She's deployed data warehouses before and was involved in our initial deployment at the Texas Education Agency. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Elaine Rula.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, we're going to take a look at some preliminary visualizations that could be applied on top of the eScholar data warehouse. Before we begin, I'd like to say that all of the visualizations that you will see tonight, none of them contain any data that represent real students or real campuses. It's all fictional. The first example I have on the screen is an attendance dashboard. This is a comparison of district data to elementary schools, junior high, or high schools. In this case, at the bottom of the screen, we have measures in the area of attendance and tardies with different levels, five or more, eight to nine, or more than nine absence or tardies. This screen is not the full, there'd be a little more extra data down here, but it would be the district overall that would show, so you could easily compare. would be the district overall that would show, so you could easily compare how your high schools are performing against, say, your district overall, or your junior highs in comparison with the district. And so, you can check and filter according to the requirements on the upper right-hand side of the screen. Moving on, we're looking at an attendance level, attendance dashboard at the campus level. In the upper left-hand quadrant, we see we have October, November, December, et cetera, monthly attendance, average attendance rate, which the district goal displayed in the dotted line. So, we can see how the campus is performing against that district goal. On the bottom, we have a longitudinal view of month-over-month attendance from the beginning of the year through the current, through the most current year. On the upper, on the most current month, excuse me. On the upper right-hand side, we have the demographics, broke out by demographics, year-to-date average attendance rates for each demographic group. Purpose of this particular type of breakdown is to look at how our subgroups are performing on attendance and to try to close those achievement gaps for each subgroup. As we move forward, looking at the enrollment comparison dashboard, this particular dashboard, we have selected two schools, and we can see them in the right-hand side. We have Xavier High School and Woodville High School. And here we have an ethnicity enrollment breakdown for each campus. On the bottom right-hand quadrant, we have students-per-teacher breakdown. Again, as my colleague mentioned a minute ago, this is customizable into what kind of information we contain in the right-hand side. Another interesting fact about the enrollment dashboard is this would happen to be a map of Arlington, and you can drag in through the reporting tool, different U.S. Census data from the most recent census. So, you can see the areas of high growth, you can see multifamily dwellings that are increasing, and how dense the population is in given areas in, on this map, according to ZIP code, or you can even break it down to farther, to smaller groups than even the ZIP code areas. We ran this enrollment-by-course visualization by the principal group, and they were particularly interested in this because it displays several different types of information on one report. In this case, we have student list, we have a couple of demographic categories that we're looking at, then we have year-to-date absence and tardies, with students who are exceeding the district goal highlighted. We also have detentions and referrals listed on this particular report. We have a trend arrow next to those detentions and referrals, so a green trend would show a downward trend, which was a positive trend in the areas of discipline. A red arrow would indicate that this performance period was increasing from the prior performance period, so a negative trend. In this case, we also have scale scores for English 1 reading and writing STAR, and a PSAT score. So, what this demonstrates to us is information coming from multiple silos into one report through the data warehouse. We could also filter by course, say, if we were at a junior high schools, we could look at Algebra 1 students, how they are performing versus our regular math students. This particular measure is a visualization on the On Track to Graduate for elementary schools. In this case, we're looking at On Track to Graduate across the district in the very top bar. Again, not real data, just, just mocked-up performance data. In this case, less than 50%, slightly less than 50% is On Track to Graduate across the district in the elementary schools, and slightly more, Off Track. In the middle, we have On Track by Campus, and so if we click on a particular campus, we would see pop up at the bottom of the screen the grade levels for that particular campus. So, you could easily scroll through, see a campus, and identify grade levels that are on track or off track. Drilling through, we would see an On Track matrix for our students, and we can easily see by checkmarks or X's who is on track in which given areas. In this case, we have the areas of attendance, subject grades for reading and math, and test results for reading and math. And we could also drag in teachers and organize this by a teacher group, so as a former teacher, I could look at that and say, group my students by the students who need help, additional assistance in the areas of reading or math to get back on track to close the gaps. This particular one could also be filtered by grade level. You could also have a campus filter on there, a variety of filters that you could put on there to view. Finally, we're looking at parent satisfaction survey. On the left, we have the criteria of the survey. We also see we have two years' worth of data here, assuming there was one survey per year, but I know that in several districts like to survey more than once per year, you could see multiple surveys on the same screen and see how, if the data is increasing, like if our parent satisfaction is increasing throughout the year, or if we're having a decline in parent satisfaction in a particular area. In this case, the orange indicates unsatisfied, and the darker purple indicates the most satisfied. So, we could easily, at a glance, see how many parents are satisfied and what the overall score is. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present.
President Hogg, members of the Board, Dr. Kavazos, it is my pleasure to reiterate exactly what Chad had already gone over about the expected outcomes, because this whole thing is all about the outcomes. And, you know, with the expense, it's kind of like, what kind of bang do we get for the buck? And one of the things that is so important is, we have this challenge, like he said, about having a central repository, and I can't tell you how much time it takes to grab from one place over here and then grab from another over here, look, get the link between whatever it is that you're looking at, and if there are, just doing two of them is big. Being able to have a central place that has already sort of had the linkages with all these things is incredibly efficient for getting data very quickly and in a timely way. So, that whole notion about central repository for ongoing reporting analysis is, you know, for me, it'd be by itself, you know, sufficient. Real-time awareness, the fact that it's always going to be, you know, daily updated, you know, students move in and out, they move across campuses, and how those reports or those visuals will be adjusted accordingly, that's all very important, not only at the district level, looking at all the different campuses, but of course, at the campus level, seeing how things could change. You know, sometimes it might be, oh, boy, we've got this influx of some students that are just doing very well, and it might adjust some things in terms of what the thing, or the vice, or vice versa. And it's a red flag, and it's immediately something that you might be able to attend to just then, immediately, not something that you wait for some hard copy that comes from Accountability Planning and Testing later on, six weeks later, and then you find, oh, my goodness, here are these students that came into my campus, and here's how they're performing. So, it, that real-time awareness is, it is extremely powerful for effective use of data to make decisions and getting it sort of in a very timely way. You know, the whole thing about justice delayed, is justice denied when it comes to justice and with what students are rightfully should be getting, that's quick. It's very quick, and so therefore, we, you know, I like justice, so it's, it's one of those things that is very important for students. Forecast trends over time, being able to collect all these things. And over time, yes, this will build over time. And, you know, trend data is the sign of quanone of everything for good decision-making. You know, one time does not a pattern make, two times does not a pattern make. And when you start getting three and four times of things, then you start having a pattern, and that is something that usually strikes as something that might be more systematic. And so, that, that might imply certain kind of systems adjustments, systems changes, and that kind of information, again, is very powerful. Program evaluation, like I said, this year, our challenge with program evaluation, pulling from various sources, it takes an awful lot of time. And this is something that we'll be able to expand, the different programs that might be evaluated, even with the process aspects of, with observations, and keying those things in immediately, you'll, you'll be able to see how all that together. How does the fidelity of a program match with the actual outcome of a program in terms of student achievement? So, it's almost like program evaluation would be an ongoing thing for any input that has to do with student achievement. Continuous alignment with state and federal standards, just by virtue of E-Scholar having the relationship with TEA, I think, is very nice. Along these lines, we would probably have some very quick adjustments, if nothing else, to get some alerts of that, you know, here's something you need to be looking at right away. Higher level of data quality, as, as difficult as it is in just linking data sets together, and that is difficult, the more difficult thing is making sure the data is clean, and we spend hours upon hours of just clean data. So, they have within their system, and they call the business protocol or something, that screens all this stuff, alerts people to go ahead, go back to the source that says this data needs to be corrected or something, just having that again. An ongoing basis, we probably would be able to have, again, quicker reports, just because the cleanup is so much faster. The tool for teachers to track student progress is powerful. Again, it's customizable in terms of all the different major factors, and over time, we will find out which factors have the most predictive power for decision-making and making good decisions. And so, for teachers to be able to have that for all those, it might help them say, okay, if I go with this particular area on student achievement, say, a particular reporting category on STAR or in the curriculum assessments, this seems to have the, this resonates. This is the one area that if I attend to this, it's going to have repercussions, you know, on several areas. So, that, that is another powerful tool for teachers to be able to use. Access to additional data for parents, it's amazing what can actually be given to parents eventually, you know, at some point in time, when they can see a lot of these different things, again, in a way that is understandable, not just a whole bunch of lists of numbers all over the place, but just being able to see one sheet on their child, and they can get a sense of their status or where they are. Again, it probably would serve to help engage parents, just by being able to have that kind of information. If nothing else, there's a red flag, they call up, that's parent engagement. So, again, access for the additional data for parents is particularly important. The other thing I want to say is that expected outcomes is how this is all going to evolve or should be evolving. The, the potential for breadth and depth is just that. It's, it's very extensive in both directions. The challenge is going to be about prioritizing. The challenge is, okay, we can have a lot of breadth, but it's superficial. And to the extent that something's superficial is the extent to which it's probably not going to be very good data for turning into action. Breadth or depth is the one that will change an action, but then that means discipline about, okay, we may not have breadth of a lot of indicators or visuals, but we can drill down, down to the point where, you know, to the teacher level, something, some decision in the classroom can be done right away. So, but that's going to be something that needs to be reviewed by several stakeholders, you're one of the primary stakeholders, about what kind of information is going to be very important for you, and then putting that against the priority of the teacher that needs to have it drilled down to their level so that they can actually execute something swiftly. So, that was with the expected outcomes, and I don't think we have anything else. Any questions?
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Carter, thank Chad, thank you Elaine and Wolf. We have a lot of data people up here, so we have some questions, so we like data. It's weird to say you're excited about data. Mr. Pompa.
Thank you, President Hogg. Yes, we do like data, so. Great presentation, actually. It's something that we've been talking about for quite a while, Chad, so it's good to see that coming actually to a presentation to the Board. On some of these reports that, that were just really kind of sample reports, I just wrote a question on one of them. You might have answered it on a later slide, but, for example, on the report, one of the first ones that gave you attendance dashboard, and you had district level, and you could compare district versus high schools, do you have, would you have the ability on something like this to drill down to an individual school? And how far down can you drill down?
Absolutely. You can drill down to the individual student. That's the intention, is to be able to go down. And, and another example of that drilling down to the individual student is actually the On Track to Graduate. If you looked at that, we started with the district, down to the group of, in that case, elementary schools, to the individual elementary schools, down to the classroom, and then down to the individual student. And that is absolutely the intention of these reports.
Okay. Excuse me. And then, this question is really for Wally. Focusing, again, if the data is there, then it's just how we manipulate it, right? And, and the critical part is the types of reports that we, that we decide to look at, which is what you were talking about just now. To me, I think the, the most important reports will be the ones that tell us how we're trending on our, on our objectives. So, our On Track to Graduate, obviously, STAR still has to be one of the big ones because that's, that's a state mandated. And so, I think the, the highest reason for stress with our STAR tests, for example, is that we have no idea until the day that we take the test that, how our students are going to do, whether we're going to be okay or not. Do you believe that this will help us, help give us an indication or maybe some predictability in terms of if you're, if you've done these, and if you're trending in this direction, you're going to pass? Pass, pass, pass the STAR test or whatever it is, that objective that you're looking at, that if you're following these trends and you're hitting these benchmarks, for example, then, you know, I mean, it's pretty unlikely that you would not end up where you want to be.
Right. Mr. Pompa, I think what it does, it allows for a lot of creativity and the application of even more sophisticated kinds of data analysis. When, I mean, let's face it, when it comes to achievement, it's multivariate. It's several things. And to the extent that we're able to get more and more data from those very, various factors that have been shown to have influence on student achievement, you know, from research, longstanding research, and we have it in a data warehouse, and it's consolidated together, and be able to look at those things and analyze them and check to see what are the best predictors so that we can be efficient about utilizing what are those best predictors. You know, content validity is the, is the main thing. In fact, in education, content validity is even more important than predictive validity because it is about what is, what's the learning that's going on right now, and then how do the students, do they, do they get that achievement immediately? Does it have an effect on the predictive? Absolutely. But it's, it's mostly, when it comes to the diagnostic side of it, it's, you can get that information, but yes, it could still also be used for the predictive side of it. So, over time, like any kind of predictive model, over time, you'll get more and more data as available, and over, you know, years, and then you get stability about, yeah, this kind of trend, this kind of prediction, this kind of factor, it is every single time, it's a, it's one of those at least moderate predictors, when you get a bunch of them together, together, they become powerful predictors. So, this enables that, that process to be developed.
And then, I think we might have touched on the, on that, the ability to really put, as we've talked about, put each student's performance, their individual performance over, over the years, kind of on a, on a graph, and be able to say, according to this student's performance over the years, we predict that this is the level of growth that we should see it from this student at this time, and, and then we can really, really use it for performance, you know, across the board, from the student to the teachers, to the, to the, to the, to the school campus, and, and obviously, to the district overall. So, this is similar to what SAS had, is doing at some other districts, it gives us the capability to be able to, again, predict performance and put it on a graph.
Right, and that's, that's because they're relying on a lot of those, their data bank of all those years, and they're able to hone in sort of efficient predictors, models that, because of the sheer number of predictor, and over time, they've been able to identify those factors, and they're, they become pretty stable. They have their challenges when it becomes a different assessment, or a different, something else comes in, a different way of looking at what attendance is. And so, it's, but nevertheless, they, it's, it's developing that, that full database of, like I said, multivariate things over time, then you can really get some very, very efficient and powerful models for prediction.
Correct, so I, I, I think at the end of the day, this is a great tool. It's how we utilize it in terms of... It's how we utilize it in terms of what type of data we, we look at, and what type of reports we put together to really eventually use it as a predictive analytics tool, rather than, you know, what we have right now is kind of a lagging, you know, we see how they did, and then we go back and try to, try to fix it, you know, next year. But what we didn't do with these students already this year, we've missed.
Yeah.
And so I want to get to the point where I can be looking at students throughout the year and intervening, so that at the end of the year, they are where they need to be before they go on to the next year. And I think, you know, I'm glad that, obviously, your experience, your expertise, and Chad, I mean, the, coming together of the two of you, I have full confidence that you will be able to put together the right uses for this, for this wonderful tool that we'll have. So I think this is great.
Well, at least recommend it.
And I, and I have a feeling that this board will listen to you. Thank you.
Ms. Solins.
Thank you. Dr. Carter and team, great presentation. When I see this type of capability for the district, I just, I'm very excited about the potential in terms of analytics and more productive use than trying to spend time piecing in parts together and doing it all manually. I do have a question, following up actually on Ms. Pampa's remarks. If, what is the outlook for the evolution of this kind of dashboard for parents and student access?
Obviously, that's very much in the long-term forecast. As we mentioned, I think one of our first priorities is to really look at having a solid foundation built. And as we start to pull in, for example, some of the identified data sources that Dr. Carter had mentioned for Phase One, just to give you a few examples, our teams, ProLogic teams, which houses all of our student and financial data, our ERO, which is our PD space, Polaris is another big space, Career Cruising, our old SASE data as well, and some additional testing data. So the first thing is to get that solid foundation, connect those systems, be ready to go, and then kind of go down our matrix of prioritization. So for example, one of the first things we have to do is get our, get our key stakeholder groups together, and start to really talk about what does that need to look like. So that's going to be the first big piece to really shape ultimately where we start and what that should look like. But our goal is to turn that all the way down to parents, and it's customizable, we can have that as extensive as, as we choose. That's totally up to us. So for now, we're kind of starting with district data, campus principals, kind of followed by campus administration, expanding that to counselors, APs, bigger footprint down to campus, quickly trying to get that to teachers as quickly as possible, so that they can start looking at tracking and seeing where their students are at, that's critical for them. So if we can get it to them sooner rather than later, that's a win, in my opinion, right? And so they can start to look at that. And then we can design what that parent footprint looks like.
Good. Great plan. I'm looking forward to watching this roll out. Thank you.
Ms. Pena.
Were you all at TASB SLI last year?
Yes. Not that we were, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, because I saw this demonstration, and they actually put me in as a student to pretend, you know, all my disciplinary problems.
What the discipline problem say, Ms. Pena?
They made them up. I was a pretty bad kid. But I thought this was a great tool then. This is what I was referring to when I was talking about accessibility to information about your student and, and being able to tell where they were, because in the old system, I could tell if my daughter had an assignment, did she do the assignment? What grade did she get on that assignment? You know, that type of thing. And I was always looking there, because I wanted to see, you know, was I getting the full story? And I love this. This is wonderful. If we get something like this, it will help, because there are other places. We have people who are key holders, that are community key holders in, in our group, who are wanting to see what the trend of specific schools are, because they're giving scholarship money to these schools, they're sponsoring these schools, and they want to know, is it doing any good? Them being involved in that school. And this would be perfect, to be able to drill down, you know, as Mr. Pampa said, to the student, to the school, to the grade, that would be wonderful. So I really, really like this.
Thank you, Ms. Pena. Let me ask a quick question, this may be for Chad or Wolf. As, on, on customizing reports and some of these dashboards, Chad, is that something the district can do, or do we have to, then, if we have the data, do we then have Wolf and his team have to put those reports together so that we can access those?
One of the nice things about this product is, obviously, anytime you involve a project of this magnitude, you're going to rely heavily on the vendor at first.
Of course.
But a core piece of that is going to be side by side with them, because we do want to transfer that ownership. Over time, we do want to transition to doing our own customization if and when. And one of the nice things about this, some of the backend tools that exist are enterprise level that are utilized by many, many people, and we have the ability to grow and learn those. So our goal is to, obviously, early on, lean heavily, get a solid foundation, and then transition to try to do as much in-house as possible.
And, and I guess I'm going on that question, that's exactly, but i- if we have an ad hoc report we need to run.
Yes.
Is there, you know, are we eventually going to be, Wolf, no offense, but do we have to pay you every single time we, we have a new custom item we have to bring about?
President Hogg, you've put me on the hot seat, but I'm, I'm ready to answer.
We have talked a lot of.
Yes, yes, many conversations.
Am I helping in your negotiations, Chad? See where I'm going?
It's been tough negotiations on, yeah, on one side. Our goal is to train the district folks. And so it's, we have a, a pretty, I think we have a comprehensive training program, we have comprehensive documentation, there's also a user community. That is, Arlington wouldn't be isolated here, that Arlington could share knowledge with Northside, they're using the same product. So it's, one of the advantages of using a product is everyone's using the same baseline, they're all talking the same language, rather than something that was custom, where there's nobody else you can really talk to. In this case, when you talk to Northside about, hey, how did you develop this report? The data elements all have the common names.
And Wolf, let me ask that, and, and Mr. Kell will laugh, because in the HR world, I see the workdays and what they do for software as a service.
Sure.
To bring those together, with that user community, and that's where I was going with this question, with that user community, when Northside loads all that data from TEA, and they have a custom ad hoc report that they're using, and Dr. Cavasso talks to our, his Northside counterpart, are we then going to be able to access that user community, and that report's already built for us, so Chad doesn't have to build it, and we're all able to use it as a group?
Chad will have to deploy it in the Arlington.
In our system.
But Chad will basically get the core code.
It would already be built from your organization, if they built it, or Northside, and they could swap it.
Exactly. Either from us or from Northside. And remember, we're going to train the Arlington staff to be able to develop the reports themselves. We'll train them in the tool to both load the data, as well as to develop the reports.
Perfect. That, that's great. Let me ask a question, when y'all showed that one chart that had the maps on there that we could draft students, we have, Chad, we, you know, we have a large amount of transfer students.
Yes.
Are we able to plot each of those transfer students and be able to show where they're coming from and what their scores are doing?
Yes, sir. We sure do.
Okay. That's a, then let me ask, the, the last question I have is integration with other systems, because data's great, and as Mr. Pampa said, it's how you use it, and I worry about, if we don't make it easy for our teachers to eventually be able to log in.
Right.
Then they're not going to look at it.
Right.
And if they have another sign-on, another password, you know, so is this, Chad, built out so that it can have a single sign-on source to, I know you're looking at.
Yes.
What other could be our front page, but no matter what, whether it's Teams or wherever, if you eventually go to some other, is it going to be able to access where a single sign-on in any report can be brought up for anyone to view?
That is our, that is an outcome, yes, an expected outcome. Now, I will tell you, that is a separate piece to this project.
Okay.
But absolutely, you know, and we've talked a little bit about that, that absolutely isn't our plan to design and implement that solution, not just for this product, but across other products to have that function.
To be able to have that single sign-on. So you're saying, to have a single sign-on, eventually, when we're ready for that piece.
Correct.
That's another piece we need to add.
That'll be layered in and wrapped into this.
With this.
Yes.
Okay. I, I just want to make sure it has those capabilities, because we don't need to add it.
Right.
It doesn't have those eventual capabilities to log in to any system we have, and have a true single sign-on to make it simple.
Each product is a little bit different with how you integrate that. This being a web-based product is a little bit different than some of the traditional products that we have, but that very much is in line, and we'll tailor and bring this system in as a part of that implementation. Yes.
That's perfect. That's, that's all I have with a couple more questions. Mr. Barron.
Excuse me. Thank you, President Hogg. Are there any of our legacy systems that are not compatible?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm going to.
Any system that can, where data can be extracted, can, we can pull that data in, really any system, because there's an interface that allows that data to be in a very common format known as a comma separated variable, or CSV, which is about the most basic way to pull data out, and that data can all be brought in.
Yes, and really, there's a tool for us to do that. So as we learn how to do that, we can upload that data ourselves versus having to rely upon them to do that over time.
We will, excuse me, we will not be entering any data into this system, though. We'll enter our data into our current systems, and it'll be.
That's correct. That's correct. So think of it as connectors. So we're basically connecting to those systems, and we're ingesting, or basically pulling all of that into that central repository to be able to report off of and analyze and trend data over time. Right? So they'll still key in, for instance, student data into Teams, data into Polaris, all those systems will still exist, but we'll extract that into a central location for analysis.
Okay. Will our users be writing queries or just selecting from reports?
Have the option of both. So obviously, they'll have the ability to do ones that are built into the system, those that are power users and want to dive in deeper. I know a few of them already, and we, they're involved with a committee, they'll have the ability, they'll have the ability to do that. So we do have X number of licenses built in for those that want to dive as deep as they want to dive. They certainly can do that. So a combination of both.
Do we want to ask what it's going to cost yet?
They're negotiating.
I see. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Mr. Barron, I'm sure they'll find some data in our, in one of our archaic systems that doesn't match. Do you use Roman numerals still? Or DOS? How do you connect with those? Yeah, programming code. Dr. Rush.
Thank you, President Hogg. I've definitely liked everything that I've heard, both from you all and from my colleagues. Chad, I'm, I know you all have vetted this out, would you consider eScholar one of the market leaders nationally with data warehousing and dashboarding?
Yes. I mean, we're very impressed, and the committee was very impressed with, with our product, and really, the holistic solution as itself, it really, it really does everything we want in a comprehensive way. And one of the things that really stood out to us is the ETL process, the air reporting, that was big for us. And so that was a thought of very highly through the process. Along with the visualizations, we, you know, doing reference checks and checking with current customers and reaching out to other people, glowing reviews. And what really sticks out to me revolves around support, being there when you need them. That stood out very well from all the people that we reached out to. And when you ask the simple question of, if you invested all this money and had to do it all over again, would you select that same product? And the answer is yes, for everybody. That kind of tells you a lot. So, yeah, committee was overwhelmingly supportive of this product.
Very good. And without getting into the specific numbers, because things are, I guess, still in negotiations, can you provide to us some information on how this is typically priced out? Is it, is it per population, the, the amount of data? How do you work that?
It, their, population plays a role, but it's intended to be an enterprise for the district. So the district, there's no cost for loading extra data, or, or for the number of installations of it. And that, so we provided a single price with a single fixed price fee for future years to provide certainty to the district. And I think that, that was very important to Chad, through numerous conversations, he reminded me of that. And, but that is very important to us as well. We want to provide certainty to the district, so the district knows what the sustainment plan would cost.
And is that similar to your competitors as far as pricing structure? Is that pretty much an industry standard then?
There, there is an industry standard to it. There are some who will try to lowball it, but we also, what's very important for us is that we charge enough that we can support you. You want somebody to call, somebody to answer the phone on the help line if there's an issue. You want to make sure that we continue to evolve the product, you want to make sure that we document it well. There are folks that will lowball something, but then total cost of ownership means that maybe three or four years down the road, and we've run into this, districts who went with a low offer, didn't have anything at the end, and ended up coming back to us. So we were sort of like the Midas, was the Midas man who said, pay me now or pay me later? But.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Chad, let me ask one last question. I think that's all we'll have for the night. We do have the power to enable student FERPA rules and privacy data, so a teacher can only possibly look at theirs, and then averages of other classes.
Yes.
And, and parents, of course, wouldn't be able to drill down to another student, but you always worry about one school looking over at another school and seeing what another, I mean, that's all in there protected, correct?
It is, yes. All the security roles and privileges. As an example, as a teacher, you don't have access to your active students within your, within your class. And obviously, as those rights change, then your privileges change within the system.
Anytime you have this much data in one repository, you always have to worry about our data security.
Agreed.
Are we taking enhancements to that? Is that relied on with, as a software as a service, from Wolf and his team?
That's one reason why we really feel strongly about having an in-house solution for the central repository. So this is something we're going to host as a district, so it will not be a software as a service type of measure. So everything will be locally housed within the district.
Okay. That's perfect. You know, with the data security, I think it leads to, as a district, we've got to keep advancing of what we're doing for data and privacy security. You know, code of conduct, you almost look and say, how does that add data and privacy security into that as another factor? So I just, I say thank you for looking at that, and tell you to continue advancing what we're doing on this, this day and age of more and more data. I think we have to be, as a board, more and more aware of protection of data. That's all the questions I have, and no more lights for the evening. So I, I thank Chad, I thank the committee, I thank Wolf and Elaine, thank you guys for coming in. Thank you.